Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Public Work Session of the Nishamani School Board, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Maybe call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Parentano.
President.
Mr. Allen.
President.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
I'm here.
Mrs. Hollenbach.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz and Mr. Marington are absent with prior notice. Mr. Sorillo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Our executive session statement, "The Board Met an Executive Session This Evening Prior to the Meeting to Discuss Matters of Employment, Issues Related to Labor Relations, the Purchase or Lease of Real Property, Matters Related to Litigation, and Matters Related to School, Safety, and Security." Mrs. Burns, are there any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Dr. McGee, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Today is June 8th. It marks six days remaining in school, three half-days and three full-days the remaining of this week. The seniors, the Class of 2021, will finish their class-by-class schedule on Thursday as they have a graduation practice on Friday. Also on Friday, our 4th graders and 8th graders will have their move-up day ceremonies in their respective buildings. And next week, we have our half-days as we close out the school year. And then next week, on June 15th, at 6:30 PM in Harry E. Frank Stadium, Nishamani will have its 128th commencement, the Class of 2021. How do I know it's the 128th? Well, when I became principal, the person who left it before me said it was a certain number, and I just added one each way along the way. So we assume everybody counted right for the last decade or last century-plus. So that, we have a lot of stuff to do here at the end of the year, and things seem to be coming together as the world is opening up a bit. So this will be the last meeting before we dismiss for the summer, so I'd like to say everyone, please enjoy your summer break, a well-deserved break. I will pick up the emails in mid-July explaining what, to best we can tell, will happen in September, and I will foreshadow those plans somewhere in the end of June, so people have a general idea as what the forecast looks for September. And it looks very bright. So, thank you, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. This will take us to our first period of public comment. Do we have sign-ups this evening?
Yes.
All right. You'll be called to the podium by name. You'll have three minutes. Please give us your name, the area in which you live, your occupation, and please no personal attacks. Mrs. Burns? Just hit the red button there.
What was the last part I need to let you know about?
Just give me your name, area in which you live, your occupation, and just no personal attacks.
Oh, sure, of course. So, my name's Matthew Taylor. I live in the Quincy Hollow section of Levittown, and I'm self-employed. I have a produce store in Fairless Hills. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, who attends kindergarten at Walter Miller. I'd like to discuss an email that was recently sent out yesterday by Dr. McGee regarding the continuation of requiring students to wear masks. In the beginning of the email, Dr. McGee states that the decision to continue the mask requirement is not entirely about COVID-19. If it's not entirely about COVID-19, then what is it about? Dr. McGee stated that there would be emotional anxiety issues and disruption in our schools if we removed masks now. Why is it that the removing of masks causes emotional anxiety issues, but the requiring of children to wear the mask does not? Was the emotional well-being of the students not a priority in the fall when masks were required? Masks were quickly forced on our children without any concern for their emotional well-being. As a personal example, my daughter now thinks that she can simply get sick by just touching another classmate. Is her anxiety and emotional health not important to you? Or how about her physical health? She now comes home complaining of frequent headaches from having to wear a mask all day. Dr. McGee also states within the email that he disagrees on the process and timing of eliminating a mask mandate in Nishamani, and the process of reteaching for understanding and emotional comfort for all would take longer than the remaining days of school. It is not your responsibility to reteach or educate our children about why we don't need to wear masks anymore. The responsibility of teaching our children about the removal of masks should be at the parents' discretion, not yours. It is time to let parents parent their own children and let them decide for themselves what is best for their children, both physically and emotionally. Having my child wear a mask or not should be my decision and not yours. For the comfort of all, as Dr. McGee states, he feels it's necessary to continue to require masks. I understand that everyone has different comfort levels, but continuing to require everyone to wear a mask for the remainder of school is not for the comfort of all. I'm not comfortable, and my child is not comfortable having to continue to wear a mask. In the closing of Dr. McGee's email, he says that he has consulted with counsel regarding his decision, and that his attorneys disagree with people like myself and Dr. Damsker on being able to remove the mask requirement immediately. What exactly did you seek counsel for? Who was on the council? What data can you provide to support your decision? What purpose do attorneys serve regarding this issue? Why was it even necessary to seek legal counsel? These are all questions we deserve and have the right to have answers to. And when Dr. McGee says Nishamani will decide what is best for Nishamani, I think I know what that means. You seek counsel and legal advice to do what is best for yourself while our children are forced to wear masks when they don't want to. Enough is enough. If you truly have my child's best interests at heart, you will end the mask requirement immediately. It is time to let parents decide what is best for their children and not you.
It's not red, it's blue. Sorry.
It is blue?
It is blue, yeah. It lights up red after you push it, though. Does that help? Okay. Good evening. I'm Jessica Powell. I live in the Twin Oaks section of Levittown, and I'm a stay-at-home mom. Good evening. My son is a 1st grader at Pearl Buck Elementary. My son Jim and I are here to speak on behalf of the children and parents that want a choice. Our son Zachary has always enjoyed school. He has always looked forward to going to school because he can learn something new. In fact, his kindergarten teacher called him her "little scholar" because he's so smart and enjoys learning so much. Zachary enjoys seeing his friends, making new friends, and talking with them socially during lunch, all normal things that children his age should enjoy. Normally, when I drop Zachary off at school, he quickly says goodbye to me, and he excitedly goes into school, very excited to start his day. This school year has been very different. Now, when I drop him off, he has a very sad look on his face as he says, "I hate this mask," and walks reluctantly into school. He is no longer excited. In fact, he dreads going to school. This year, Zachary has developed a lot of anxiety because of the mask, has become very antsy, and he has trouble sitting still in class, so much so that the teacher has threatened numerous times to send him to the principal's office. Zachary has never been in trouble for anything. Zachary has actually stayed home many times just to avoid wearing the mask. He has never had these problems before. As I'm sure you already know, when children of a young age are in a classroom to learn, they do so not just by listening to the teacher's words, but by seeing their mouths move and the expression on the teacher's faces, another thing that has been taken away from them, therefore making it so much harder to actually learn and retain any information. These children are being deprived of things they need in order to develop and learn properly. Is this America? Is this the land of the free? Because it does not feel like it. You have virtually taken away our ability to choose what is best for our children. That is a parent's job, not the school district and not the government. Ask yourselves why you have muzzled our children. The answer is that there is no good reason for it. Children are more likely to die in a car accident or from suicide than they are from COVID-19. You are causing our children irreversible harm by making them breathe in their own excrement. God only knows the medical issues these children will have due to breathing in their own carbon dioxide for six and a half hours a day. If we are left without this choice, many students, including Zachary, will choose a charter school next year, and will take our tax dollars elsewhere. Should things not change immediately, we will pursue a lawsuit with Tucker Hall, the same lawyer who was used for Central Buck School District, Council Rock, Pen Ridge, and Centennial, who have all decided to give parents and children a choice of what to do. It's as simple as this: Our children need to breathe oxygen. Give them and us the choice to do just that. And with all due respect, we walked by the boardroom and saw you all meeting without your masks. I want to give you a couple of papers before I leave. I don't know if I have enough time, because I understand I only have three minutes. But I'm sure, as you've all heard, Anthony Fauci has some emails that have been released to the general public where he says the masks you buy in a drugstore are really not effective in keeping out this virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. And I'll leave this with you, so you can read it in full. I also have information about how masks are harmful and 17 ways that masks can harm, written by a medical professional. I understand I don't have a lot of time, otherwise I would read things off of this. I'd like to thank you for your time. Shane Fogelman.
Actually, Zachary would like to speak now. Thank you. He was supposed to speak before Jessica.
Yes. Do you want him to wait a moment until you're ready? Okay, whenever you're ready, sweetheart.
Hi, my name is Zachary Powell. I'm a 1st grader at Pearl Buck Elementary School. This is a free country, and we should have freedom to make our own choices. If some schools have optional masks, then all of them should. It's not fair that we have to go through this. Normally, I love going to school and learning new things and seeing my friends, but because of the mask, I've been having trouble staying still and paying attention, and it's really hard to breathe, especially on hot days. I get in trouble because of the masks, and it's really annoying because I don't normally get in trouble for anything. Please let us make our own choices.
Good evening. My name is Shane Fogelman. I live in Quincy Hollow, and I'm an electrical engineer. Tonight, I'm speaking for my kids. I feel I need to do this. I think it's beneficial that we consider optional masks at this point in the school year. I know there's only six days left, and that's been mentioned in emails tonight. But it's time now, I think, to consider moving on. In the summer, there are going to be programs, classes, and activities. Kids will be participating in those, and the mask mandates that are in place now and rules for the school will affect those kids that want to be in those programs and participate in the programs over the summer. So I don't feel like there's any better time than the present to consider giving the option to the parents for their kids to attend school and activities maskless. Other schools have done this. Last month, I spoke with somebody on this board on Election Day, and I shared that I thought it was important to see the kids without masks, and that was a concern of mine as a taxpayer and a parent. And the response I got back was, "The board's following what Dr. Damsker's recommendations are." And as we all know, we've seen what's happened in the past couple weeks with other school districts and the decisions they've come to, to allow the parents to make the decision as to whether the masks are appropriate for their own child. And I would like to see that happen in Nishamani. And just because there are six days left doesn't mean we can't make a decision, or at least give some kind of promise to a better next year for these kids. Again, I think there's no better time than the present, when it's happened elsewhere in the county. You have Council Rock, Pen Ridge, the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, which is 35,000-plus kids that are attending school maskless, Central Bucks School District. And I'll say this, just in closing. And again, I'm speaking for my kids, and nobody knows their kids better than the parents. We see them every day, and just like any of you that have kids, you know whether something's bugging them, or something's wrong, or something's out of character for them. And I've seen my youngest have trouble. I know friends of mine whose kids have done very, very strong actions that a child shouldn't have to do under these things. Kids are being affected by this, but I heard the buzzer go off. I just want, I'd like the kids to be able to see each other. The sooner the better, and give them a little hope for a better next year. But thanks for the time.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for being consistent throughout this unprecedented time in history. I do not envy you. I know you guys had a lot of hard decisions to make. I am part of a large group of parents from all over southeastern Pennsylvania. At, oh, I'm sorry, Kim Gorman in Red Rose Gate. I am a manager of my husband's functional medicine facility. So I am part of probably 50 or so parents from all over southeastern Pennsylvania who have been fighting this fight since day one. I've always been so proud of us. What they're dealing with is way worse than what we have been dealing with most of the time, so I've always spoken so highly of Dr. McGee and our board and our schools. But I have to say now, we are falling way behind. There's obviously a lot of arguments around this mask. It's definitely the most volatile and divisive subject that we have, except the vaccine probably is going to run a close second. I'm not here to speak about the effectiveness of the mask, because we all choose to believe what we choose, which is the beautiful thing about America. But I attended the Central Bucks Board meeting myself last week to support my friends and their right to choose. And yes, it was a four-hour meeting, but because 50 people signed up to speak, the majority of those, I will say 35 from what I remember, were speaking about making masks optional, and there was about 20 people that were on the other side. And there was a lot of us that didn't speak, but were just there for support. So it was a very long meeting, but it began with Dr. Damsker explaining that masks are not needed. There's simply no data to support that our children should continue to be masked. He said that he feels that masking 105,000 children and staff for three cases a day is unnecessary. The Montgomery County Health Director specifically stated just the other day, and I quote, "Sudies have shown that masks, both cloth and surgical, have done very little to prevent community spread over the last year." He also acknowledged that the mask is now just a comfort for some people, and that the psychological damage has already been done to our children for no reason, as the science is now showing. Your response, Dr. McGee, to me and others, was, "Unmasking without support would cause more emotional anxiety issues than remain with masks for a few days." I don't understand what you meant by that, except that my children are having anxiety issues from wearing a mask, but nobody talks about us. We're all doing everything for all of the fearful people, and it's not okay. My child's freedom should not be removed because of somebody else's fear. The notion that we should do what is best for others is absurd. What about my children's anxiety and emotional issues from being muzzled for an entire year? How is it okay to suppress our children? As the saying goes, "I will not set my child on fire to save yours." And to some, that may be selfish, but I know I speak for many others when I say, "It is selfish to not put your children first." And I don't feel that we are putting our children first at all. My children's health is my responsibility and not anyone else's. In the end, this is about choice. We're not asking for masks to be removed or prohibited. We're asking for the choice for them to be optional. It's not comfortable for all, because clearly it's not comfortable for us, and that would include all. "All" is a big word to use in that case. Our kindergartners, as has already been said, have not even seen their teachers' face. Their first educational experience has been a disgrace, and I'm also a teacher, so I get it. But now is the time to make the most-
Please finish up.
I'm sorry, I have one sentence. Yep. "Now is the time to make the most important decision of the last 18 months. Will you let parents make the best choice for their children, and will we let the last few days of an otherwise horrible year end with smiles? It's your decision. Please make the right one."
Mike Hurcorn.
There we go. Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you guys being out on a crappy night like this. Everybody else is pretty much, Mike Hurcorn from Feasterville. I'm a Learjet captain for a corporate flight department. Everybody else had wonderful statements, well-prepared. Mine was not prepared. I was not supposed to be here. I was supposed to be at soccer practice, but I canceled due to the rain. So instead, I'm just going to read an email I wrote to Rob last week. "Rob, we have communicated in the past. I hope all is well. I drove past Fertabar today and saw the kids outside at recess wearing masks. They are afraid to take them off because they have been unfairly conditioned by us, the people that have a duty to care for them. That masks are a necessity. Their adult counterparts, us, are free to go anywhere without them, without wearing them. As somebody else mentioned in the executive boardroom, I didn't see a single person here with a mask on. As I've mentioned in the past, almost since day one, when the schools were wrongfully closed, children are not, have not, and will not be a vector for transmission of COVID-19. Continuing to force these children to wear masks every day in school is a physical and psychological danger to them. Many of my son's friends have fallen ill due to bacterial, not viral infections since the weather has become more humid and warm, more so than any other season I can remember. I believe this is a direct result of them breathing through filthy, bacteria-infested masks. I realize the school is winding down, but every minute these kids are forced to wear their masks, they are being abused for no reason whatsoever. Does anybody on the stage up there feel guilty about continuing this mandate that has been lifted in almost every other venue across the country? Thank you."
No further sign-ups.
Is that it? There's no other sign-ups. Does anyone else in the audience wish to approach the podium?
Hello, everyone up there. My name is James Powell. I live in Twin Oaks, and I'm a manager of a warehouse. Since this has all started, I have not worn a mask. I have not worn a mask once at work. I go home every day. I've had to be at work every day. I don't get a choice whether my safety is safety anymore, because people choose what they want. We should have a choice on what we want. I go home to my wife's father-in-law, father, who is sick. I don't get a choice. Even if I wore that mask, I could still bring something home. So just please, think of the children. Give them the opportunity to choose, because they can't speak up for themselves. We have to do it, us as parents, or as grandparents, or as uncles, or as aunts. We need this choice. Don't live in fear anymore. We have seen what has been done. Just give us a choice.
Evening. My name is Jennifer Brown. I'm from Georgetown Development Langhorne. So I know it's been a rough year for everybody, and I know six days left, it's a lot to, you know, handle right now with everything ending. I'm just hoping that next year is a more positive year. I am optimistic, as about 60% of Pennsylvanians have the vaccine, especially adults. I talked to my son's pediatrician. He said he's seen some, he's seen thousands of sick COVID kids. And he said, honestly, it doesn't affect children the way it does affect adults, that, he said he's seen more kids sicker with the flu than COVID. So he said, you know, I agree that, you know, some kids should probably get the vaccine, but some, it's really not a big difference. I mean, it's more for the adults than the children, and high-risk adults, obviously. But I think for next school year, maybe we should really consider what the parents choose. I mean, I'm sure parents know what's right for their children. They, you know, they wouldn't put their kids in harm's way. So I think definitely for next year, let's let the parents choose.
All right, we're going to move on to this evening's action items. 2.01, I'll read this. Administrative Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of administrative staff. Timothy Hunt, replacing Joanne Holland as principal of Bequesting Middle School, with an annual salary of 100 and, Christ, I can't see it. I gotta get new glasses. $149,985. Motion's been made on 2.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Do we have Mr. Hunt in the back? Is he here? Please stand up, Mr. Hunt. Congratulations. Done a great job for us. Wish you lots of luck in the future. Thank you very much. Brings us to 2.02. Mrs. Hollenbach, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 2.02. Certified Staff Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff. There are one, two, three, four, five. There are 15 names on the list.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Mrs. Boyle, could you do 2.04, please? Hold on a second, I missed one. Hold on. 2.03, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. 2.03. Certified Retirement, Resignation, End of Assignment. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirement, resignation, end of assignments for certified staff. And I see one name.
One name. One name. Motion's been made on 2.03. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. We want to thank Ms. Hoffman for their service in Nishamani of 28 years. We wish you well in your retirement. Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, 2.04, please.
2.04. Certified leave of absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leave of absence for the certified staff. And there's three names on the list.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.04. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Cirillo, 2.05, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 2.05. Certified revised leaves of absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leave of absence for certified staff. And there are two names listed.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Bowman, 2.06, please.
I'd like to make a motion. 2.06. Support staff appointments. Be resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approve the following appointments for support staff. And there are four names on the list.
Motion's been made on 2.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Hollenbach, 2.07, please.
I'd like to make a motion for support staff retirement, resignations, and end of assignments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignation, and end of assignments for support staff. And there are five names on the list.
Motion's been made on 2.07. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. We have four members of long-term service that are retiring from the Nishamani. Mindy Anderson with 31.7 years of service. Robert Schultz with 17 years of service. And James, I don't want to butcher his name here, Zimbinski, with 25 years of service. Thank you for your time spent here at the Nishamani, and wish you well in your retirement. 2.08. Mr. Allen, please.
I'd like to bring a motion to the floor. 2.08. Support staff leaves of absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for support staff. And there are five names on the list.
Motion's been made on 2.08. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Sullivan, 2.09, please.
2.09. Support staff revised leaves of absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following return some leaves of absence of support staff. And there are three names on the list.
Motion's been made on 2.09. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Bowman, 2.10, please.
I'd like to make a motion. 2.10. Co-curricular appointments. Be resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certificated and support staff, subject to the following conditions. Number one, in the event that the activity is canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to any order by the Governor of Pennsylvania, Secretary of Health, prior to the commencement, the coach or/and/or advisor will receive no compensation. And/or, number two, in the event the activity has commenced and then canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to any order by the Governor or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, the coach and/or advisor shall receive prorata compensation for the period of services rendered. And there are five names.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Motion's been made on 2.10. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to Section 3. Items for approval at our next public board meeting. 3.01. Site logic IQ proposal, construction manager for new proposed elementary school. 3.02. Budget transfers. 3.03. Contracted transportation service. 3.04. Contracted healthcare consultant services. 3.05. Medical stop-loss insurance for 2021, '22. 3.06. Year-end budget transfers. 3.07. 2021, 2022 final operating budget. 3.08. 2021 homestead and farmstead exclusions. 3.09. Procurement and transactions audit professional services agreement. 3.10. Appointment of auditor. 3.11. Student settlement agreements. 3.12. Second reading of policies. 3.13. Contracted security service agreement. Those will all be on the agenda for next meeting. I believe that's June 22nd. Dr. McGee?
Yes.
In this auditorium at 7:00 p.m.
Yes.
Section 4 is our committee reports. Business operations. Ms. Hollenbach.
We do not have any more business operations meetings scheduled for the remainder of the year. We will be voting on the budget next meeting, June 22nd. Correct? Well, it wasn't listed here, so it threw me off. I am happy to report that barring any changes or how the vote goes, we are looking to pass the budget with no tax increase for this year, next year.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Ms. Bowman, educational development.
We currently do not have any further meetings scheduled for this school year. We will reconvene back in the fall to discuss some changes to curriculum. And there were a couple other MTSS modifications, and we will be back together in the fall. So I'll have a date for everybody at the July meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Facilities and planning. Mr. Sullivan.
There are no more meetings for facilities and planning this year. We will have a meeting starting in September next year, and we will probably have monthly meetings next year due to the proposed building of a new school on this site, an elementary school, and the stadium project and the grounds project.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Boyle, policy.
There are no meetings scheduled, you know, right now. We will meet again in the fall.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Brings us to our representative reports. Mr. Cirillo, IU board.
This evening, the Bucks County IU board, excuse me, the Bucks County IU is actually celebrating their graduation. So I'd like to wish all the students well wishes and good luck on their new endeavors. Also, the Bucks County IU this summer has a free FabLab Summer Fund at select Bucks County Public Libraries this summer. The mobile FabLab will offer three-hour, steam, interactive, energized, age-appropriate learning lessons for children entering grades K through 8. If you are interested in that information, please refer to their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Educational, Nishamani Educational Foundation. Ms. Boyle.
Our next meeting will be on Monday, the 14th, and we are going to be meeting in person in the boardroom.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. That brings us to the PSBA liaison, which is myself. Currently, the PSBA is working on the budget with the legislators to try and secure additional funding for our schools. And they're also working on two Senate bills that are referring to changes in the funding model for both public schools and charter schools. Mr. Allen, technical school, please.
Thank you, Mr. Veritano. On May 24th, the Joint Board of the Bucks County Technical High School met, where we were primarily given a overview of the capital improvement project known as Warm, Safe, and Dry. The items we were presented with that have been earmarked as the red light issues, things that we definitely need to be done over there, or I should say are urgent need to be done. HVAC rooftop equipment. Gas piping needs to be upgraded. Boiler room burner, upgrade on the boilers. The controls for the HVAC equipment. Antiquated fire alarm system needs to be upgraded. Emergency lighting. Security system and the roofs themselves. That will estimate it to be in the neighborhood of $22 million. The, as per our Articles of Agreement, Nishamani's part of that bond will be in the neighborhood of 27%. The RFQs, so we actually know exactly what we're talking about, will come back to the tech board on June 18th. Again, this is all preliminary, but we need to move it along so we have some actual firm numbers so we can present it to the districts and make decisions on where we're going to go with this. The only other item that we discussed of any import at this time of the year is graduation, which will take place on June 14th over in their traditional site now, over in Trenton in the Cure Insurance Arena. Is there anything else, Ms. Bowman? All right. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the close of the meeting. We're going to start with our second period of public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the podium for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to future topics. Are there any board members that have any future topics? Hearing none. That'll bring us back to our board comment, and we'd like to start with Dr. McGee. Do you have any commentary this evening, Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Veritano. Yes, I'd like to address some of the public comment. Obviously, masks are a very difficult topic. Presently, we're under a Commonwealth order to mask, and the Nishamani's order, unless the board acts, will expire at the end of the month. So beginning July 1, there will not be masks required in the Nishamani. And unless a governing body decides otherwise, I don't think any of us see masks being something that's needed in September as well.
The quorum, please. The quorum, please. The quorum. The quorum, please. We're adults, all right? Yelling's not going to get your point across, all right? I understand the frustration. I understand the frustration, all right? We're going to act like adults. That's how we act here. We appreciate your comments, sir. All right? Are you done? All right, let's continue with the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. McGee.
So as I stated, I don't see myself recommending or the board approving masks for next September or beyond July 1. There were a number of questions, so I'll address them as best I can. Outside, we are not requiring masks when kids are outside, involved in physical activity, phys ed class, or recess. And honestly, we've relaxed the outside mask rule to the point where we are not policing it, and people decide what they do as far as those on our campus. So based on the temperature as well, that has been relaxed in an unofficial sense. Within our schools, we still do have the masking policy for the last six days of school. It is my belief that changing that right now would be more disruptive to the educational environment. Well, I'm sorry you disagree, but I'm in it every day. I understand we disagree. We have been very successful in bringing a whole bunch of kids back to school. So I've watched the kids on the other side of that computer that were there in masks earlier begin to slowly come back to school, all right? We are at our highest point we've ever been. If we change that now, we risk sending more kids away. So if I take it down to one particular example, I'll pick my favorite third grade class, all right? That class is finally all in. They're all back, all right? Suppose there's a child in that class, for whatever reason, believes that they're at jeopardy when other kids don't wear masks. They choose to wear one, but they feel that it's concerning that others don't wear one. Maybe it's about their health or the health of somebody at home, all right? Regardless of whether you believe they were told right or wrong, that's what the child believes. So that child, suddenly, the next day in school, and their parents are faced with, maybe their parents are even convincing them, "It's okay. It's okay." But they can't convince the child. That's the point we're in right now. So that child, that child deserves to be able to come to school. And I believe if we ask the other kids in that class, "Do you mind wearing your mask for an extra six days so this young third grader can come to school and feel comfortable and feel that they're not going to put others at risk?" I believe the nine-year-olds in that class would choose to continue to wear their masks for the next six days. So for those reasons, for the stability of the end of the year, I believe we should continue our mask order and then let it expire with the governor's order.
Sir, there is no motion on the floor. There's no motion on the floor for a vote. This is out of order. This board has a right to conduct a meeting in a legal fashion that's set out by the law. So there's no motion on the floor, and there's an opportunity for public comment has passed.
You're telling me my child has to live in fear about his children? How is that right? How is that right? That is not right.
The opportunity for public comment has passed.
You people don't want to listen to us. This is what we've been drawn to. This is what we've been brought to. Is this a meeting?
This meeting, like any other meeting that we've had all year long, will be conducted in a proper manner. Yelling, yelling is not going to get your point across. You don't have to yell. You've sent emails. We've heard you at the podium. There's no motion that's going to be made tonight to fix masks. Now, the board's going to have their turn for comment, and if you want to speak to us after the meetings, we'll be glad to speak to you. But there is no motion-
Why don't we go to boardroom without our masks? Our children could be doing that.
Because, because, because we're all vaccinated. That's why we're in the boardroom without it. It's a controlled, it's a controlled environment, okay? So that's where we were, okay? So are we-
Sir, this board has a legal right-
We're going to move on to the board comment. Is there anyone else on the board want to speak?
No, I just want to go home.
Yeah, you want to go home because you don't want to hear the truth. You want to hurt our children. You are hurting our children.
If I could just say one thing, whether we agree, whether we agree-
It's not about agreeing or disagree. You're not giving us a choice.
Excuse me, I'm speaking now. You had your chance to speak. I'm speaking now. Whether we agree or disagree with masks in general or in the school, there are six days left, and I have two children in this school district. So to say that all of us do not do what's best for the kids is your choice to do.
You're doing what's best for your children.
You don't know what I'm doing or not doing. I am doing what's best for the governing body, and we've made the choice to not vote on it. It expires. To say that any of us don't care about the children in the district is very unfair, but you're entitled to your opinion. you're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you.
Anybody that would, anybody that would like to run for the school board, by all means, stand up and vote and do that.
All right.
Thank you.
The Nishamani has been at the forefront of this, way ahead of anyone else in Bucks County. We've gotten our students back faster. We've gotten them back in school under more programs than any other school district has. We decided on, I'm speaking now, sir, okay?